Let's get it.
All right. We will call the Board of June 1, 2020, call the County Board of Education, call a meeting to the Board. And Dr. Banks, can you give our indication, please?
Let us pray, please. Father God, we thank you tonight for this call meeting. Thank you for everyone that's assembled here tonight, Father God. I pray that we make decisions that will impact lives moving forward. And Father God, I pray that we will always have eyes that will see the best in others. I pray that we will always have a heart that forgives the worst and that we always will have a mind that forgives the bad and its soul that never loses faith in God. We praise you tonight, Father God, for what you have done for our system throughout this COVID season. I pray, Father God, that we will get better as we go through more and more of this, but post-COVID, hopefully, we'll be better than before. And I ask you, Father God, that whatever budget cuts are there, that you would provide a remedy for us to escape any deficits that will impact the student achievement that we have experienced in previous years. Father God, I ask you, moving forward, that you continue to bless our superintendent, all of our board members, all of our teachers, classified and certified staff, let us continue to be about our Father's business, knowing that He was about love. And we learn that love will cover a multitude of sins. We ask His prayer in Your mighty, unrighteous name and the righteous name of Jesus. And I ask, Father God, during this summer season about to come up, protect our students, let them be prepared to do greater things as we approach to go to a new normal, hopefully, on August 7. Let us continue to abide in You and abide in Your Word, that we will continue to bear what's true. This is our prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask in the Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
All right, everybody's seen the agenda. Move it forward. We've got motion to approve the agenda. I believe we adopt the agenda as presented. In discussion. All in favor? All right, Dr. Lee.
All right. Board members, I would like to welcome you back to a, I guess we could call it a B.C. meeting before COVID. So welcome everybody back. Appreciate you being here. We certainly are still observing the social distancing, as we can see throughout the boardroom. But welcome back. I do think it's appropriate, given the events over the past seven days, that we have a moment of silence in memory of George Floyd and the situation in Minneapolis that led to the events over the weekend, the protests that turned violent and such as that, and all those events that unfolded. I think it would be appropriate if we had a moment of silence just for the family of George Floyd and for those folks who've been affected by that, and then just for our country and our people and our local community, for peace, for people to treat each other, Matthew 7:12, the golden rule, treat each other with love and kindness. So we will have a moment of silence. All right. You've got the agenda. And the main purpose of this meeting is for the FY21 budget hearing and to ask the Board to review the budget thus far. And then we will be proceeding the rest of the month with ultimately the approval of the budget. But we have to have two hearings, so we have today designated as a hearing, and then we have June 8 designated as a hearing. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tracy Yollin to walk through the budget documents that you have in your notebook. And so this is certainly a time for you to ask questions and for us to review what we've worked on so far. But this process started back in February with staffing meetings. It actually started in our retreat in February. So those who are watching over the television, you've not seen all of the lead-up work that has led to this, but we had a retreat back in February in which the board members were presented a lot of information. And each month, information's been presented. So Ms. Yollin, you want to go forward?
Yes, sir. The first document that we will look at is the calendar. This is the FY21 that shows our budget process. And we've had to update it due to COVID-19, so we just wanted to go through the timeline. In January, as Dr. Lee said, we began a meeting with principals and directors and looking at enrollment and the different budgets, so that we could have been planning for FY21 budget. Then in February, we met with the Board, and we presented some staffing updates that we were showing through that January budget process that we were going through. We began in March projecting state revenue and expenditures. And in the middle of March is when the circumstances of COVID-19 took place, so we stopped for a little while till we knew where we'd be. So we are now at June 1, 2020, with our first public hearing, and we were required to have two. The second one will be on June 8 at 6:30. And at that time, we would like to, we'll present with you the tentative budget that we would like to advertise in the newspaper for two weeks. As of now, we would like to come back to you June 25 at the regular board meeting to adopt that budget. Then that would give us a little bit of time to start uploading the budget into our financial system, so that as of July 1, we would be ready for the new fiscal year. Then beginning in July, we would start with the tax digest and go through that process, you know, let you review that and get your approval and advertise as needed. Okay? So that is where we are now with the budget. Any questions on that?
So whenever you advertise it to go, you say the papers for two weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that what, anybody to have an objection of what is going on? What is the purpose of the advertising? Just one moment.
Well, during the two public hearings, those meetings have been advertised on our website and paper. So anybody can come and voice, you know, their opinion or if they have questions, you know, ask questions at that time. And then once you approve it, it's advertised. But if there is questions, then they could come at that next board meeting and discuss those, you know, with us, making sure we see it.
That's a good point. Good question. I can assume over the years, they've created that law so that if any taxpayers have objections, they could come and voice their concern.
The next document is a budget planning document. This reflects the state reduction in our allocation. And this was with the guidance through the State Department, where all agencies were asked to do a 14% reduction. So if you look at our FY20 initial state allocation that we received, which was our QBE allotment sheet, that is the $55,702,464. The 14% state reduction of that is $7,798,344. We will be receiving stimulus funding through the federal government called CARES Act, through the CARES Act. That allocation will total $2,565,115. And that budget has been approved. And what we're doing with that, those funds, is we're offsetting costs in our general fund budget, such as salaries, benefits, some bus fuel costs, utilities, and maintenance supplies as far as sanitizing the buildings and things that we'll need for each of our schools. Okay? And that has been approved by the state at this point. So after you take the figures into account here, the projected state reduction of our QBE allotment is $5,233,229. Okay? Any questions on that?
Sorry? Yes. And that is based solely on the projected state reduction?
That is solely on, we have not received an official allotment sheet. And normally at this time, when we come to you with the budget, we've already received that allotment sheet that we're basing our revenue on. And we have not received that. So we're just basing this on the guidance that we were given. Okay?
The guidance in my meetings with superintendents was to budget based on FY20 state funds, and then also in your meetings with the state finance folks was to budget based on FY20 funds. And so that was their recommendation. And I do want to make clear those FY20 funds, remember the governor was talking about giving raises back about three months ago. Those raises would not be in that FY20 funding. And so I think you can pretty much count on those raises that he was going to put in the budget for FY21 won't be there. So the guy was part of the guidance to use FY20 QBE funding. So just want to make that clear. Because I think, given the current situation, that probably not going to happen.
But okay, so but is the, so based on that FY20 estimation, is that what you built the budget?
Yes.
Oh, that's not reflected on this sheet?
No, no, no.
Okay. That's just the straight?
That's just, yes. It shows the reduction of what the reduction looks like for us.
But the budget in here?
Yes, there's a budget document in your notebook.
Reflects is amount.
And when we receive that official notification from the state of our allocation, we will bring that back to you so that you can review that. Okay? For the revenue piece. Okay. The next document is the revenue projections. As I said, this document for the state is just based on the guidance that we've received. It's not an official document we've, you know, we've received, and we will come back to you when we receive that. So we'll walk through this one. The first column is the FY20 budget. This is our, that column reflects what we budgeted this current school year. Okay? The next column is where we project that we will end up. And then the next column is our projection for FY21. The top portion is the local taxes. So for our local tax revenue, we are estimating $14,634,000. We're going to be a little conservative on the TAVT, because I believe there is a new bill, and we have, I think it has stopped. It's not went through the session yet. So I don't know the impact that's going to have on our district. So at this time, you know, we feel that we just need to be a little conservative there, even though we see that this current school year, we will be closer to about $1.6 million And if you follow through the document, the other is our other local revenue. We're, you know, pretty, you know, we're going to stay close to where we budgeted for the previous school year there. And when you come to the second page, this is where our state revenue is. And you will see in that far right column, that is the austerity reduction that we are planning for, the 14% reduction there. I don't know at this time, you know, how they will give, you know, that reduction will be. I don't think they'll spread it out in some of our other grants that we receive. So at this time, we just, you know, took it as an austerity, the lump sum there. So the other state revenue that we left, you know, the same, as far as our equalization, our charter funding, our CTA grants. And that's what the remainder of those are. So when you come through the document, the total projected revenue for FY21 is the $63,928,15. Okay? Any questions on that document?
No question, but just clarification, but that does not include the CARES Act?
No, no.
That's what we're getting cut, and that's not included in that?
That's correct.
Oh, that's federal.
That's exactly right. The CARES funding is federal funds, and that is not part of our general fund. So that is not reflected in this.
If you open your notebook in the budget piece in your notebook, you will see in the different areas where the CARES Act money has been applied. It's in red.
Yes.
And that will notate where we've applied the CARES Act money to offset the loss of state funding.
Yes. That is under the budget section.
If you go to the budget tab in your notebook.
Yes. The first page in the budget tab is an overview of each function that makes up the budget. So it's just an overview of the FY21 projected for each function of the school system, and then the budget for '20, where we are now. And then the next section is the detailed accounts for each one of those functions. And when you look through those in red, you will see items that are notated as CARES funding. So that's where we're using that CARES funding to reduce, you know, the general fund, so we can help, you know, offset that cost. And again, we're using it on salaries and benefits and fuel costs, utilities, and supplies for the schools as far as sanitizing the schools. So if you look through the, on the top sheet, the overview of the budget, you will see that the projected 2021 budget is $68,487,375. So when you compare our estimated revenue to our estimated budget, there is a shortfall of $4,566,560.
What we've discussed is no one going into it with a four, basically a $4.5 million deficit. We feel like as we move into the school year, we can do some things to try to reduce that a little bit as the school year starts, with positions that may come open, maybe positions that we don't fill, somebody leaves, maybe some moves like that. Reducing travel. Travel is a big, big expense. As you all have already seen, we're not going on the GSBA conference like we typically do every year. Those things start to add up when you start taking all that out of the budget. So reducing the travel, reducing positions as they come open, encouraging staff to cover for each other as much as possible instead of getting substitutes. Substitutes are a big, big budget item. But we feel like we can reduce it down as we move through the school year, just through operations and trying to make reductions throughout the coming school year. And, you know, under y'all's leadership, we've been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we've got a fair amount in reserves we're projecting to end this fiscal year with. And we feel like we can operate into this coming school year for the next six to nine to 12 months. And let's see what the revenue looks like over the next six to 12 months and see if the state revenue improves or how that works out. But we feel like for the short term, that we can manage it, and we can move into this school year with this budget we're presenting, knowing that we've got to be very profitable and very efficient moving forward.
We had a hire and freeze on them now, or?
We did, we chose not to call it a hire and freeze, because there's positions that we've got to have, and we don't want, we don't want to reduce positions if we don't have to. And until we get a clear picture on revenue from the state, rather not go that route, because we can always do that moving forward. If somebody leaves, we don't replace them, somebody. And we'll have people leave. We'll have people leave throughout the year. And so we'd rather take that approach and let attrition help us manage it if we have to start reducing in a significant way. So we chose not to call it a freeze, but yes, we have not filled some positions that we were planning to fill, probably about 12, 12 to 15 positions that we were planning to fill that we've not filled. Is that be correct, Miss?
Yes. We put a hold on some things. We need to see.
All right. But we still post in positions, take a seat?
Those that we need, for example, if we need a kindergarten class, we're going to hire it for it. If we need a third grade class, we're going to hire it for it. Until we see that things for sure aren't going to improve, or until we see that there's an absolute need to cut some of those things, we're going to try to refrain from cutting Does that answer your questions, Joe?
Of course, David.
Yes, sir. It's going to be a challenge, but, you know, the benefit is, is y'all are great board members. Some of you just hitting your first time with this kind of financial situation, and, you know, we, we hate to be overly confident, because the situation is pretty dire, but, you know, we've managed difficult budgets before. If you go back, as we've talked about before, the difference in this situation and the last situation, the last one started over a series of years, in 2002, they started the initial reductions, and it just continued and snowballed. I'd like to be optimistic and hope maybe this is a little shorter duration. That may be overly optimistic, but, you know, the primary cause of this whole recession that we're looking at has been COVID-19. So if suddenly that situation changes, we might see things improve.
Will you going to be using less surfs for tips?
Yes, when we talk about that being a strategy.
Do you know what we spend now surfs tips?
I can get that number for you. We budget up about $300,000. We normally spend that and over.
Okay. Quick question. So, okay, I'm looking on the, on the page that's got the 2021 projected fiscal budget. It's got the projected, the original difference of 2.8 million revenue. So you mentioned four. Was there a?
That, for revenue, looking at our projected revenue.
Okay, so the projected revenue.
Project revenue to looking at our projected budget.
Do you have a tone on projected revenue that I can?
Yes, sir.
On another page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's on revenue page. All right. I got you. Okay. So the 63.9 minus the 68.4. Okay. Got you.
Which page do you want, Ron?
It's just a combination of the budget proposal that showed the difference in?
I'm looking at 2021 projected fiscal budget.
Right. I'm looking at that page there where they've got the CARES money applied. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you, and then just minus the revenue, and that's where she got the 4.2. Was it 4.5?
4.5.
So the projections over to the right, that's not necessarily a cut, so that's just that much less revenue, like maintenance and operations down a million 252.
What year are you looking at?
People are looking at that same page, because I have the same question. So you had already made some projections to lower some of these budget items, and that's what this page is. That's totally separate.
Okay, where does that come from?
Somebody comes from the CARES money.
Where it coming from?
The CARES money. We're plugging in CARES money on some of those salaries.
Back up.
So that's not a pencil chart, where they just apply that money?
No. Exactly. And that's a, I had that question.
Page is behind that, where it lists the different items. The ones that are in red, where they apply that CARES money.
So there's not a difference in the actual budget? Just have the budget up there?
Well, I mean, I think the effort is to stay as whole as possible, going into it, and then, as you go into it, let attrition, and just pressure test some things that, we've done that in the past. I don't want to lead, and I appreciate y'all not coming tonight with the word furlough. I don't want to lead with that. I think that, you know, I mean, there's counties around us have already announced. You know, Catoosa County is already out there and has announced their plans. I know their demographics are different than ours, but my point is, is that I think we're in a position locally to do some strategic things before we take that step. And that's going to be, you know, my expectation at least, is that we, you know, we've been through a little bit of this. I had not gone through, I think one thing, I think one thing we have not gone through is we have not gone through the austerity cuts leading up to this. You know, this has just been something that's, that's cut deep for the whole, the entire economy. I mean, it hit our industry March 13. We got those phone calls March 13. You know, restaurants that you eat at, places that you go out to, sports venues, theme parks, travel, folks spending money on gas, but those sorts of things, the money, the money to pay for all this that we plan to do has got to come from somewhere. But, you know, I think y'all have done a good job of laying out an initial, and we've got a week to put some other questions together and, you know, and work through. I just, that's going to be my commitment too, is as we work, as y'all work through it, and the things that make sense, and keep our children, you know, instructional days as whole as we possibly keep them moving forward. I'd like to see those sorts of efforts made.
Yes, sir.
That'd be my speech.
Well, no, that's the point of this meeting, is to put it out there for us to talk about, make sure we're on the same page.
Instead of the substitutes, what we're planning on doing, you say, give the teachers to cover those classes.
Yes, sir.
So we, you have the teachers for enough time to cover up the classes for the entire day.
Well, we, that was a strategy we employed in the last time when we had these type of budget reductions, and it was a strategy that was used then, so we just thought that So we just thought that's something that most of our folks have lived with before and they could probably do again. And I think most of our employees would rather try to do some of those kind of things rather than go as Mr. Presley, to strength of furlough days and such as that. Now, would we do that just straight across the board? Probably not. We just encourage our folks to try to be as conservative with using subs as possible, but try to reduce sub use as much as possible. Because some others, professional learning activities and things like that that we've done, we can just cut some of that out and not do that.
So for instance, if you have a teacher that's expecting, you know, again, they need to be some five weeks off.
We'll have to get subs in those cases. Yes, ma'am. Maternity leaves, things of that nature. Yes, ma'am.
You know, I want to walk away from this meeting, and I know, you know, this isn't for television. This isn't for us to make ourselves feel better. But I'll give you an idea of what our organization went through. And this member, you may can share what your organization went through. There's organizations like mine that no longer exist as of March 13. They're done, they're gone. They don't have an opportunity to be told, we'll replace your salary in the coming six months. They're out of business, they're gone. There are companies like us that made really drastic cuts. And what it's affected, it's affected their relationship with the people they do business with. And I feel like our commitment is to the children first and to everyone that supports our efforts in that mission is next. And those folks, just like the folks in my company, we took some dire hits. We really did. But our leadership stepped in and said, hey, if you'll hang in there with us, there is light at the end of this tunnel. We don't know how long the tunnel's going to be. We've got a projection in the second quarter. We haven't heard of projections in the third quarter yet, but we're still here. For the most part, all of our frontline customer-facing folks are with us and doing their job every day. No one's bailed out on us, no one's left us. We've done things like close offices that we realized, you know what? Everybody's working from home. We figured out how to do some of this technology communication-wise. We're going to do some things that don't impact our people, right? And our customers. And our customers are our kids and our families. And I just, I hope as we go through this, and I know we've got a lot, a lot of smart folks. And I know Ms. Clayton's here, she's gone through it. Dr. Banks is here, he's gone through it. Sid's here, he's gone through it. Michael's here, he's gone through it. It is, these times, we don't get the opportunity to hide away from them. It's here, we've got to face it, and we've got to face it together. And we'll win together. Now, our motto, win together. And we have, we as a company, we have turned the corner. The companies that we represent have turned the corner. You start to see restaurants start opening back up. I've got customers that have had record weeks based on the type of operation they have. I've got customers that are still suffering greatly. It's all over the place. And I just, I don't want us to just take a blanket approach and use what was, you know, we can use a scaffold, right? Or a pair of tweezers. We don't need to use a hammer, right? And we don't need to use a bug sol to get through this, at least at this point. Because I think, I heard it today on the town hall meeting. There was, you know, some honest discussion about the difficult questions that have got to be answered in the budget as they reconvene at state legislature level. But the hope is that we start to see this thing turn. And I'm hoping, you know, I know we have to plug in 7.8 million dollars immediately. You have to plug that in. I'm hoping they'll tell us, hey, we're going to wean y'all down the road. And as we get back to normal, maybe we can stay more. So that's what I'd like to see when we leave out here, that we've got a positive attitude about capabilities, best y'all's office, Dr. Lee's office, and all the support staff here that are going to help us, you know, put this thing together.
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's kind of my thoughts on this whole budget process is that, kind of like you, I feel like this year we're going to take the biggest hit. I really feel like it'll be better next year and next year. So if we can weather this year, I think we'll be in a good position. We came into this in a great position, consider. So we actually have the luxury of taking a hit this year. We got to take that four and a half million dollars and we got to try our best through different means to wheel it down as much as we can. But I'm like you, we're not going to go up there and furlough people and cut jobs and do all that right now. Because we've got the ability to say, hey, we can weather this storm and come out another side because of financial health and we came into this problem, you know. So I say we take that four and a half million dollars, we do the best we can with it. We cut, you know, what we can cut that doesn't harm our education or the quality of our education. We keep our people in forward, we keep doing what we're doing. And whatever ends up in the end, we'll accept that at the end of the year. Hopefully next year, it's moved back down to the number that we can, you know, get back in there with a bounce budget. I'm not big on not having a bounce budget. I don't like it, but this is a situation that's out of our control. And this is what we plan for. This is the whole reason we tried to build that year on file up. You know, ask a question, my time gets away from me, I don't know if it was a year ago or six months ago, but I asked a question, how much do they recommend us keeping in that account to be considered financially healthy? And that's kind of what we're getting to. Well, that's the whole reason, is for things like this, for things that are beyond your control to come up that, you know what, you have to do it. And so I think we're here, here's one of those situations. We're in a situation where we can handle it, and I think that's just what we have to do. I think we keep our people employed, we keep providing the education that we've been providing. And, you know, everybody's suffering, so we try to get through this year. And then next year, we'll reassess it. I really feel like next year we'll be better. I think we'll be in a better position. But if not, then, you know what, at that point, maybe we have to rethink some things. But I don't think this year we have to. I think we do the best we can, we cut that number down as much as possible, and then we just move on from that.
I think if anything, though, we've learned in the last several months that within 24 hours, the game changes completely. So you just have to be totally prepared. I think everybody sitting in this room is committed to our children and our school system. So that goes without question. But we are going to have to be transparent in saying there may be some things that come that we don't even dream of tonight, having this conversation on next Monday. And we just have to be prepared and be good stewards of the money that's revolving again. We don't want to lose that financial.
Our plan was to present this tonight and then to come back next Monday and complete the budget process and present a tentative budget to y'all to advertise in the paper after that. So. This is our budget hearing. If there's anybody that has any comment at this time on the budget, they could speak. All right.
Anybody who wants to have a debate, sir?
All right.
We won't charge, we won't charge. I'll charge the parking lot, so I can have a debate, sir. Won't you give us?
Yes, sir. Let's hope it doesn't come to that. All right. Budget hearing number one, that would conclude budget hearing number one. And we will meet again next Monday night at 6:30 next Monday night. All right, painting projects. At our last monthly meeting, we presented a proposal for painting at Eastside Elementary School. And there were some questions about the proposal of the vendors and the quality of the work and the work history with us, such as that. So I've got Mr. Spikes here tonight. I've continued with the recommendation that I had at our last monthly meeting, which was to approve the low proposal, which was Intercontinental Commercial Services. And Mr. Spikes is here to kind of describe our experience with Intercontinental and then answering questions that we may have. So Mr. Spikes, the low proposal is $27,100, and that's what we're recommending. Are there any questions for Mr. Spikes about the proposal?
Well, I do, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't know if you were in the meeting or not, but I, you know, we went through the paint process. Has it been five years?
It's been five or six.
Maybe going into the SIS. But the concerns then were even the prep work that had happened and just putting bad paint over bad, I mean, putting new paint over bad paint. And we just, I kind of, with the difference in the bid, I just had a question is, are we going to expect to see the same sort of thing or going in and doing some?
I talked with our paint supplier, you know, their technical support guy, I guess, the guy that comes around and looks at problems that we have with their paint. Because I remember them painting this, that I was in this position at the time. What he had said was they have put paint, epoxy paint, you know, I don't know if you know about epoxy, that goes through a heat. And he said that they have put that paint over some paint that was, there were some underlying layers that was loose. And then it went through the heat, it caused them to lose.
Start peeling, yeah.
But they were great about coming back. And I do remember them coming back and grinding the paint down to the very wall and reprimanding the paint. You know, he had an issue, they painted for middle school a year or four years ago. And there were three crews there, and one crew wasn't doing their prep work in the college. Once I seen they were doing their college, they sent them out and brought another crew and walked the group to, we had problems with the dead paint. They come back and we had some problems with it and they did come back.
I'd like to do everything we can do not to have to keep coming back.
Right.
I mean, that was my question about the difference in the bid. It was one of them quoting you, a good bit more prep work and so we don't have to keep.
Well, I talked with the ICS guy this morning and he assured me, and I assured him that I was going to be watching him, like, you know, to assure them that they would do loss and they would be skilled or whatever, they sometimes lose and they would do more correctly. Possibly, but it would be a significant change.
Are there any other questions about the paint? We'd like for the board to approve this tonight so they can go ahead and get in there as soon as possible.
I was just going to ask, I think he kind of answered it. Are they good with the warranties, you know? I see that they didn't come back.
We had a major problem with them, and once if I called them, they come back. Actually, they came back and done some repairs at the middle school that was caused by teachers that cut wood nails. And they repaired it. But it actually wasn't their paint, it was just that they had put off glue on it after they painted it.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to get approval, go ahead and approve the bid and get this group working. Are they?
Sure.
That's right. We're basically approved of bid. Intercontinental Commercial Services.
Yeah, we accept the bid as presented.
Okay. Can we discuss it? I have to pay it? Now, as far as this discussion, we have talked with Mr. Spikes. And we've been looking at West Green also. And he's going to get with his vendor and see if they can get in, look at West Green. We may come back to y'all. That is the conversation we've had.
He's coming at that, please.
We may come back to y'all if he can get in there, if we can get a bid package in front of y'all as soon as possible and see if we can get some work, some painting work out at West Green also this summer. So we may come back to that. Is that correct?
He's coming that time, and he said he would be pleased with that.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the 2020-21 handbook. Dr. Banks has done a great job working with the principals, put together changes for the handbook. There's not a whole lot of changes, I don't think, but at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Banks. You can describe to the board what we have here.
In addition to what we've discussed, I guess, the previous three meetings now. I think with our handbook, which is our guide for how we operate in Coffee County schools, this handbook that's coming up for this year is probably one of the strongest ones that I've seen. And the reason why I would say that is because we have enough content in our handbook that can basically handle just about any situation that comes up from a student perspective or from a personnel perspective. And this year, we had minimal, I did send a conversation with all of our principals about any recommendation that they would have from the previous year, anything that we need to operate differently upon moving forward. There were very few recommendations, I guess, for this upcoming year. But one, as I talked to you guys before, pertains to dress code. We addressed that. We have a phrase instead of frills that's going to be added to the handbook. We took out the conversation we had about patches not being allowed. We took that out, moved forward from there. And one question came up about forbidden items with knives. And we said within forbidden items, no knives will be allowed. And I think Ken, that's on page 22 or 18, 22 to 24. Then also at the middle school level, with progressive discipline, at a level of three infraction, they wanted to add to hitting, kicking, and shoving. They wanted to add slapboxing. They had, I guess, some problems with students that were in the restroom and other areas doing some slapboxing. So we addressed that, we added that to the handbook at a level three infraction for this upcoming school year. In addition to that, back in February, I went to a handbook meeting at RISA. And they have a statement pertaining to drugs and tobacco usage. We put that in the handbook. And I think probably one of our busiest months with discipline last school term happened during the month of February. We had a lot of threats happening that month. Came over here, spent some overnight shifts here. But we have a statement pertaining to threats that was taken out of some of the, I guess, one of the handbooks in Gwinnett County schools. I felt that that particular statement would actually help a lot of things that will come up in our school system. We're very balanced. And I feel that to me, moving forward, this will be probably one of the most strongest handbooks that we're going to have going into 2021 school year. And I say that because I've dealt with this type of stuff for a long time. But being here, being here for 20 years, I do feel like this year, coming back from the time that the kids have been off for the last two, two and a half months and going into the summer and coming back here August 7th, I just feel that we have a strong popularity with this handbook that's going to be in place for 2021. And I will say, the only thing that will cause a flaw in the handbook that's presented tonight is if we on the front lines, don't enforce what we say we're going to do. Handbook is not the problem. It's that what we say we're going to do, we need to do it day in and day out, every day for 180 days of the school calendar. And I feel that whatever comes up, whether it's level one, two, three, or four, we have something in place that we can pretty much handle every situation that comes up. If not, we have counsel, we see it sometimes, but I feel that moving forward, we have balance in this handbook, and I feel that it's going to be one of the best ones yet. But like I say, once again, everything's predicated on what we have presented. We follow through on what we say we're going to do. So any questions for me, from anything that was presented in previous meetings? Any concerns or questions at this time? I'll try to answer anything that we can.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for working on that. Coming up with all of that, imagine every situation is a lot of work. Thank you for your, thanks for listening to us. But I'm waiting.
Team F, team F.
You say this is just the student handbook?
Yeah, that's not, that's not, the teachers, they have, they have a different handbook at the school level. And I think Ms. Clayton normally handles the teacher handbook situation.
I would ask the board, if it's, at least the board's approval, to go ahead and... And I think we need to get this to the publisher.
Yes, sir.
If the board would be okay, go ahead and approve this tonight, and we can get it to the printing company and prepare it for next school term.
Now, we need to wait till the next thing because of that.
Yeah, the calendar. We do have on the back side of this, there is a statement that has the adjusted calendar. So I guess we may need to hold off. You did adjust that calendar on this handbook, did you? All right, we'll put it together. All right, go back to the next, to the calendar now. All right, the next item on the agenda is the 2020-21 school calendar. We've had three days of planning with a team of about 45 administrators and some of the academic leadership in the system, the council and leadership and such. But about 45 individuals, leadership folks in the district, we met out at the middle school. Ms. Miller did a great job putting the meeting together, facilitated the meeting. And we spent the first day working on school as is, all right? Traditional school, bringing everybody back as normal, basically, with, of course, with the interventions, with sanitizing and doing those things, and teaching good hygiene and following through those things. But Plan A is pretty much a normal school start. Plan B is if things just went south on us with the COVID, and all of a sudden, we had a ruling from the governor that we couldn't start school. And if we, having forbid, did have to kind of start the school year like we ended this one, we do have a plan for that. We've got Plan B to spend a lot of time with and preparing, and so we would be prepared for that. And then we had, the third day, we did a Plan C, kind of a hybrid. If we had to do something where we could get some kids in the building and we couldn't get, and we had to kind of do a hybrid where it was a mix, a virtual and in-school learning. So we have a plan for pretty much any situation moving into this school year. But the one thing we did see a commonality with all three of our scenarios is we feel like we need a little more planning time at the front end of the school year. Because when we left, we just cut, those kids lose, staff did their best to pull everything together. But we feel like we need to move two of the post-planning days to pre-planning. And that way, we have more days of pre-planning. One of the biggest issues is open house. Regardless of how we open the school year, we feel like we're probably gonna need to minimize the number of people in the buildings at any given point. So our open houses will probably look a little different. Instead of bringing all the families in and all the children in for open house, we'll probably break it down by grade level or by letter of the alphabet and do smaller group open house. So we'll probably spread the open house over multiple days rather than just one night at each school. So for those reasons, we're asking the board to approve moving two of the post-planning days to pre-planning. Is that what you did? And I would like the board to, you know, it needs the board's approval to go ahead and take action on that tonight, that way we let everybody know. All right, we'll have a discussion. And I guess, can we get a motion to amend the calendar to move the two post-planning days to pre-planning? Did y'all want to have a book?
Yeah, I'll move, we accept the change to the calendar. Give me a second. We discuss it. How has, how has the, I mean, has it been generally at the consensus of the planning group that this would be the best?
Yes, I actually stood before them all at our last meeting and asked all of them by show of hands, how many of you think we need to follow through with that? Because I told them I would have to be coming to the board to get approval on that type of move. And I think it was unanimous, the hands went up, y'all were there. I didn't see anybody that raised their hand to change the calendar, so.
We were divided into five groups each time, and every group pretty much had that recommendation each time for every plan. So it was, it was a common factor that kept coming up throughout the meetings, the three days. And Dr. Lee and I were there, and so we were excited about it.
And this is still with the students returning on the side?
Yes, sir.
Still, still?
We wanted to go ahead and get our employees, let them know in case anybody was planning a cruise or anything right there towards the end of the summer, they could. Get a little laugh in there. No, no, somebody might be, they might get a deal.
I have a friend who had one skip to September, and he got kicked off the bench.
But I would like to let you go ahead and know, it's in the spots that I stood. So some people in Coffee County that stood. Oh, we got a motion second, all in favor? All right, as far as the handbook, can we get a motion to approve the handbook with the adjusted calendar?
Set the handbook.
Second. All right, any more discussion on that? All in favor? I would ask that we go to executive session to discuss personnel and the employment of personnel, and then also to discuss a real estate transaction, possible sale of property or real estate that needs to be discussed in executive session. Make a motion during executive session. Motion second, all in favor? All right, executive session. Got a motion to exit executive session?
I believe we exit executive session.
Second, second, all in favor? All right, Dr. Lee's personnel. You've been presenting personnel. I would ask the board to approve the personnel that's presented. They have a motion to approve personnel that is best presented. The move. Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Is that all we've got? This concludes our meeting. We will meet again next Monday, 6:30, same, same place. We're adjourned. Remember, last week, the only vote, this week.
Yes, and then I want to say, Dr. Lee, I thank you for the moment of silence.
Yes, ma'am.
For, and I also want, and I hope, that this has taught us something that I'm not the only one has the arguments of the minorities, that this is a worldwide issue. And I hate that the mess we get to the point that it's so vague now where people are being destructed with, where we can have peaceful marches. And we need to have peaceful conversations here where it works, not just a moment of silence, but let this be our weapon for us, where we can know that we need to be equal. It's not that we want to walk in front of y'all. We just want to be allowed to walk aside. And we need some more minorities here in this system. We need some here for our children. We are begging to get some here. And I hate the point that sometimes, when I talk, like, we have people that, like, lack of interest. When I talk about this, I notice some of our members, they have their head down, you know, not wanting to hear this. But if you look at the news now, you see that black people, Hispanics, you have a lot of white people walking with this because they are tired. They are tired of this senseless stuff, that blacks lives matter. And we need to have some more blacks here, not feel like that blacks are not qualified in these jobs, when you're hiring people that, working in these jobs, are not qualified, but just because of who they are. And it's time out for this. We need to put some blacks in place, where our children need some of us to be in attendance. And I noticed a lot of comments that these white children are putting on this book. You know, it starts at home. When they're listening at what parents are saying, now, you got a lot of this where they're putting on the book about this man is on the ground, begging, he can't breathe. But it's funny to them because they're putting this nigger on them. A lot of these white people, these white children that are doing this. So when this mess comes back to school, and they laughing and going on giggling with these black children about this, see the thing about the black kids is they take offense to it. Now, they have to go to a term at school to be expelled when these white children are doing this. And the reason why, they're not used to seeing the blacks. So now it's funny what's going on here. Too many people having to lose their lives because we are not taking the initiative of thinking that it's important that blacks are, have the same privileges as the whites do. And so, and I'm just hoping and praying that this has woke some of us up. This is something that I've been talking about, preaching here since the day I've been here. And I know that a lot of y'all think that this is something that I'm just constantly weighing out, but you don't have to speak up for the white people because y'all got them. I'm speaking up for the black people because we don't have them. So there's time out for this, Dr. Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Time out beyond board numbers. Human resources, there's time out. We need to bring some lights here before it gets bad like it is everywhere else. And I'm praying that it don't. We need peaceful, things we need to come together and realize that this is necessary. So, and I wanted to say that because it's been hitting on my heart. And I feel for these people that are losing their job, losing their businesses because people has got so angry. And we not getting justice. We sit down, open and praying that something happens. But when you kill a black man, and you staying out of jail for seven or four days, or you kill a black man, and you just get fired? I mean, it's painful. So I'm just hoping and praying that some of us feel this. And I know Adam told me before, that he knows that blacks don't get treated like whites. But when are we gonna stand up? When we have to sit back and know that it's not fair, and we continue to mistreat us? When are we gonna stand up?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree, we've got a, we've got a fight for justice for everybody.
I realize, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Equitable and add some education, that for every student, I agree.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, thank you for listening.